Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. If we can have a raw call, please.
Commissioner Sizer?
Here.
Here. Commissioner Majewski?
Here.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Here.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Present.
Commissioner Craig?
Here.
Pastor Fields?
Present.
Chair Kamkar?
Here.
Thank you. By way of introduction, my name is Matt Kamkar, and I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission for this year. Let's go to minutes. Before we start, I have a, actually, I have a question to ask everyone. Is everybody happy with where Wether City? If, if you like any changes, this is a good time to do it. Everybody happy?
Yeah.
Mike? Okay. Perfect, thank you. If we can, if we can do the approval of minutes, please.
I'll make, I'll make a motion improvements of December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there is a
Second.
Motion and a second. All rock, please.
Commissioner Sizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Commissioner Craig?
Aye.
Pastor Fields?
Aye.
Chair Kamkar?
Aye.
Thank you for that. Communications? Are there any communications?
Chair Kamkar, Commissioners, Robbie, you're the Community Director, both communications, agenda modifications, none of the above.
Okay. Thank you. And no agenda modifications, okay? Oral communications, is there anyone online or here that wishes to make any oral argument? Oral communication? This portion of the meeting is reserved for individuals wishing to address the Planning Commission on matters of community concern that are not listed on the agenda. In the interest of time, I may limit the speaker's time to five minutes. Please be aware that state law prohibits the Commission from acting on non-agendaist item. However, the Chair may refer matters to staff or follow. Is there anybody online? Don't see anybody here. Okay, thank you. Seeing none, new business. The first agenda on our new business is staff presentation by parks and recreation. Staff on master plan presentation. Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Natasha Bissell. I'm the Recreation and Community Services Director. I'm here tonight to give you just kind of a quick update on trying to see how to do this. Let's see. I think I need your help. Okay. Sorry for the pauses. Alright, so I give you a brief update on our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So we started this endeavor last year. It was something that actually Rob and Ken kind of forefronted to try and get a grant for us. And that didn't come to fruition, but our city council did feel that this was a pretty important project for us to take on. And so we kind of, we set off the RFP for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and decided on a consultant. We've gone with MIG Consulting. And a Park and Recreation Master Plan is kind of the framework and the guide for Parks and Recreation, open space, recreation programming, parks, and how the city wants to move forward and kind of sets that plan for the next ten years. Unfortunately, this is the first one the city has ever taken on. We had, did one for the Community Center in the early two thousands. And so this is the first system-wide Park and Recreation Master Plan that the city has taken on. And so it's going to give us some really specific information on how we should allocate our funds, what are some high priority things? And all of this through kind of engagement with the community on what the community wants and needs. When the city bought the Community Center thirty or forty years ago, maybe fifty now, you know, the use was, you know, to kind of change that into a park space. And they've done good with that, but we have never really kind of planned forward of how our community wants to use that space along with the parks and other assets within our Parks and Recreation System. So it's a good time for us. Our community has changed dramatically in that time for us to reach out and engage the community. There's several processes for this Park and Recreation Master Plan. The first part was kind of that kickoff data collection, data analysis, which then moved into engagement and needs assessment, and then visioning priorities and implementation, and then the plan development. We are currently in this third stage right here of visioning, prioritizing, and implementing, and kind of working through that. So I'm just going to kind of walk you through what we've already taken care of and share with you some of that, and then share with you kind of these next steps of where we're headed with this plan. So a system overview. So they started by kind of a, I mean, we walked every piece of parkland in this park with the consultants within our community, and even neighboring parks. And you'll see in the upper corner, Mary Jane Hammond Park is surrounded three sides by Campbell, but it's a city of San Jose Park as well as Santa Moss Park. That area right there is actually a San Jose, but also has a lot of Campbell residents within walking distance. So kind of doing an inventory of existing parks and open space that we have. The city of Campbell has seventy point five acres of parks and open space available to our residents within our city limits. And so that was one of the first steps that we took. Kind of looked at major recreational facilities. So the Campbell Community Center and the pool, the Ainsley House, and the Campbell Historical Museum are are all part of the Recreation and Community Services Division. And so we kind of looked at those major recreational facilities. And then we did a major inventories. Can't even read this, but it kind of goes into grave detail about all the amenities that happen at all of those different parks and kind of telling and really kind of giving a good overview of what we have in our system. And then on top of that, they went through all of our parks and all of our recreational programs and services that we offer, and kind of really did a deep dive into how many people are participating, and what engagement the people are wanting out of the recreation services and where there's some gaps that need to be filled. The engagement process started right out of the gates. Some of the things that they, I'm going to jump ahead real quick. One of the very first things that they did is they met with our youth commission because they, or their term ends in May when the school year ends. And they did a focus group with that group to kind of really get their information out of the gates. We worked with our local schools to find some oops, some key leaders within the schools and did some one-on-one interviewing with them. We really tried to connect with some of the Spanish speakers at our local schools as well because that's a demographic that we have a hard time engaging with. And then in June, we offered up a statistically valid survey. So this was very specific individuals, meaning the, the right demographic of our community that has a good sampling of everything. And then once the statistically valid survey was done, we then launched into a community-wide survey as well as pop-up events. We went to parks and set up our boards where people could stick stickers on. We went to the farmers markets and events at the community center. We were hosting these pop-up with boards for people to be interactive with us. And then we're kind of moving into this next step of the online prioritization in the community workshop. So we've already done one community workshop in the fall where people came out and kind of talked about their wants and needs and what they're looking for in the Parks and Recreation System. I'm just going to just make sure I got everything. So yeah, so engagement, I mean, you guys know, it's so that we really understand what the community wants from us. And, you know, my team and Todd's team and who does the parks, it's like, we know what we need from an operational standpoint, but we have our lens of where we come from, and we want to know the people who are using our Parks and Recreation System. What do they want and need for it? And what do they want and need for their families and friends? And how do they engage with us in a more positive way? Or if they haven't been, what can we do to change? One interesting component with MIG was the health equity assessment. So this was an add-on thing that we did. And this was a really interesting thing to learn based on census data. So this shows you kind of a heat map of chronic disease burden by location. So you can see kind of that dark, dark brown has a higher prevalence of chronic disease in our, in our city. And as it gets lighter, it's less. The next one is mental health. So a higher prevalence is the darker color again. And you'll see some trends as we go through these different maps. And I'm happy to share this with Rob and Ken and send out to you guys afterwards. You can look because these are pretty interesting graphics to kind of dive into. Physical inactivity also. Again, you'll see the darkest red is that area of our community that has the, the least active people. And then disability prevalence as well. Again, the dark green is the highest prevalence of that. This last map here shows within ten, people within our community that are ten-minute walk from a park. And so the darker green means a Campbell park, and the lighter greens means other parks. So there is the Los Gatos Creek Trail that goes outside of Campbell's borders. And so that is, and it's not actually owned by Campbell, the creek trail. That's not, there's a portion that's ours and then it's a portion that's county. So the colors just differentiate that. But you will see some pockets in our community where they don't have a ten-minute walk access to a park. And there's that the northeast corner over there, and then in the south, there's some others. Some of the next steps that we have, so once they've kind of completed all of this information, they've gathered all of the, you know, they've done all, MIG has done all of the like gathering of information from our staff. They've gone out, we've gone out into the community, we've done a lot of engagement. They have kind of put together a needs assessment. They've also identified system-wide, oops, this is the yeah, they've identified system-wide, let me call it, recommendations as well as site-specific recommendations. And so some of the next steps that we have are prioritizing what, which ones of those recommendations take priority? And then balancing that with some funding strategies so that they are realistic, realistic goals for us to complete as a city. We are hosting our second workshop tomorrow night in the banquet hall. It'll be from six thirty to eight thirty. I urge you guys to come and participate. If you have friends or neighbors or anybody else who would like to come, that would be great. You do have free childcare for children four to eleven as well that they can sign up for. And it's an interactive workshop with our consultants who will be there. So they'll do some large group activities as well as some small group activities for people to help us prioritize some of these values that they have drawn out of the community engagement and how, which ones, they're looking for us to kind of prioritize, which ones will be the best? And then how do we align those with the site-specific projects they have identified? And also the community has identified too, because they're not always, I mean, the community knows of things that are wrong that need fixing too. And after this event, if you're not available to come, there will be a secondary exercise online to help with that prioritization. It just won't be as in-depth as the workshops. And so that concludes the presentation that I have for you this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions or
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I just want to, Natasha, that was six thirty tomorrow night?
Six thirty to eight thirty.
Okay.
Yes.
And so, so prior to, in terms of plans that already exist, was there a non-master plan of sorts in terms of what's, what Beyonce maintenance stuff in terms of new parks, new capabilities at the, at the, at the Community Center? Were, are there, is there a list now in terms of what was being planned in the next three to five years?
A lot of our parks within Campbell, the Public Works Department does a really good job of kind of methodically going through and has done that over the last few years. You'll see that most of them have kind of had some sort of update or refresh of some kind. The Community Center is one where we are looking to kind of focus some attention moving forward. Specifically, the pool is in, in need of some updates and repairs. You know, it is the original from the fifties. So you can imagine that there's probably some things that are not up to date. And so we are, you know, those are the things that we, you know, while the pool and certain things might be meaningful to one staff person or one group of people, we, we need consensus that this as a community is something we value as a community asset. And those are the things we're trying to draw out of the community as, as far as understanding what that is. Was there a plan prior? No. It was us as staff kind of bringing forward during budget season, what, what do we have the capacity to do staff resources-wise? What's the funding available in the Parkland Dedication Fund that can, can meet those, those projects that we, that we've identified and, and kind of going from there? So it's, is some of the projects that are on the line are going to be big-ticket projects?
I got one more question. So in a couple of weeks, we're going to be looking at a big development that's over at the Campbell Technology Center where in theory, there's going to be, that's going to be bulldozed. And then there's going to be three hundred townhomes three hundred residential's that are going to be put in that, in there. So it's the biggest parcel in the city for residential, and it's a pretty big development. And that's adjacent to Edith Marley Park? Edith Marley Park? So so is there, first of all, I, I'm not sure how, where you are of that particular development. But, but Edith Marley Park, if I'm not mistaken, does not have a playground. So, so I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if I brought that up in the, in our previous Planning Commission meeting on this. But, but there's going to be families in those three hundred townhomes. And, and that, and it's obviously the park's right there. So it's the only big park we have that doesn't have a playground. Is there anything tentatively planned?
On the Parks and Recreation side, no. At this time, Edith Marley Park has always been kind of a passive park. I would probably, you know, defer with that project coming forward as to ways to work with the developer to incorporate that into whatever it is that they're doing, whether it's through the fees or something that those could, could happen down the line. But at this point, no, that park is kind of a passive-use park. It's, it has our community garden right there and has the bioswale with the walking path through the, you know, that, that water area. And it's a very quiet, passive, nature-esque park. And so, yeah, the development will change what that park looks like. And is it something that we've been looking to, to address immediately? No, because it's not the immediate concern. So we're kind of looking at what are some, and there's some legitimate maintenance issues and, and programs and things that the community is asking for that would probably take precedent in that prioritization, just to be real honest.
Well, the developments could take a while anyways. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Where did the data source come from for, for all the health mapping that you showed?
They use the census track and it's self-reporting. So it is, you know, a little bit. One map I forgot to put in here was the density map. And so where, that was one of the comments I had when these maps came back to us is that you see, you know, those colors around, you know, John D Morgan Park and the Community Center, which are two biggest assets within the city. And A, it's a higher density area in that area. And B, it's also kind of reaffirms that that's where you should be investing your money as in those, because you get the biggest bang for your buck there, right? There's the biggest way to help that portion of the community that has these health indicators that are coming up. So I can get more information on specifically what that was, what they, what they did, but it was self-reporting. So, you know. Thank you.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Any further? So yes, two, two questions. First, like, can you give us a preview of what the major things planned are? Are there major improvements planned? Or what sort of focus are we talking about? What are we looking at for, like, both system-wide and per-site?
Well, because this is their, their whole shebang tomorrow, I'm going to wait because I don't want to blow up their slides that they have. But I'm happy to share the slide deck as well as this one with them to share with you after tomorrow's workshop if you're unable to come. Just peripherally, some site-specific, there are some, you know, maintenance needs out at Johnny Morgan on Rincon side of the park. And some, if you notice, I don't know if you go out there regularly, but on the sand side, there's some pooling of water, some irrigation concerns that definitely need to be addressed. The play structure on that side is also in need of updating. At Sojonovich Family Park, the interpretive panels have kind of seen their life and need, need to be updated, replaced, fixed, because they're just really not usable. The swing set was out of commission when they did their things. That was a high-ticket item. The Community Center pool and access to like visible access from, you know, the main office and things were some of the things that had kind of come out as ways to improve that site and accessibility for the, for the space. I'm trying to think of some other ones off the top of my head. They have, they have about ten site-specific things that they're going to be going through with the community tomorrow.
Okay, and is there, yes, do we have a particular, do we expect to have funding to do this? Or are we hoping to get grants? Or like, how? Is this a wish list if we're lucky? Or is this, the state, the city is confident that we can fit this into our regular capital expenditures?
So the Parkland Dedication Fund does have, you know, it's a healthy balance at the moment. And while it can't handle all of the projects on the list, that is a fund that continues to take in as developments happen. But there probably needs to be some other revenue sources. And the hope is that the plan will provide some funding strategies for us to explore. And one of the strategies that they, you know, they come up with is partnerships. And there are school sites that are leased, that are not actively being used by the school district, and are leased to others. And are there ways for us to partner with the school districts in park-deficient neighborhoods to provide green space to park, to neighbors? And so it's a, it's a variety of things. I think acquisition, while lovely, as you know, in the Planning Commission, land in Campbell is hard to come by. And us being able to afford the land and then develop the land would be pretty challenging. So we're looking to do what we can with the assets we currently have or through partnerships.
Thank you. That is a very thorough answer, and I really appreciate it.
Commissioner Craig?
Yeah, well, thank you. I, you know, I have, I really think Campbell's done such a good job of keeping the, the child's playgrounds up to date at Campbell Park, Johnny Morgan, Fisher. I go to all the parks, I mean, when I, when I had my dog, we still, I went to all the parks, even though it wasn't allowed, I think, at Johnny Morgan for a while. But, and I think I did the survey. I know I can't make the meeting tomorrow. I have a couple of real small things. And let me ask, given my input now, do you, is that helpful? Or is there something online where I can just fill out?
No, but let me just grab a pen.
All right, okay. I hope, I hope it's worth a pen and paper. Just a, just a quick, couple of quick thoughts, because I, I, I'm really pretty active at the city and the parks, and I love that stuff. But, and you did mention the pool maintenance. And I know that Santa Clara, of course, got in big trouble with their pool because they didn't keep up a maintenance. So I, I don't know if it's part of the master plan, but there really should be a regular pool maintenance schedule set up. And it should not get into a bad situation that Santa Clara got in with their pool situation. Secondly, I, now I live in that northwest quadrant that you mentioned that is park-deficient. Although the city of San Jose actually does have a fair amount of parks there. But my, my, my thought for a master plan is we do have a lot of big school grounds in that area. Latimer and Orland Little School. And I don't know if any city anywhere in this region or anywhere ever does some kind of a, of a deal with the school district where they can make some of the parks for the neighbors versus, you know, the school district. There's, there's really extra grounds there and would be a lot of resources that that particular area could use. And, and Johnny Morgan Park, like you've mentioned, the one thought I had, you did mention on the Rincon side, some kind of maintenance. But what's always kind of bothered me about Johnny Morgan, so it's a real nice path on the, on the, on the west side. You know, they get, you know, the sidewalk, you know, up, all the way up and down. But on the whole backside, there's really nothing but the, but the field. It would be a really, I think relatively easy project to kind of have some kind of a, a walk-in, a running path that goes all the way around circumference for that park instead of just on the one side. And the other thing, and the two other things I think have both come up in the past, but there are some perch ponds on the west side of Winchester that are not accessed to the public. Seems like that, and of course, that's the water district, but that's something for the city maybe to work on. And then my final thing, I know this, this has come up, and I think it includes Cooper, Campbell, and some other cities, San Jose. But there's a, there's a creek, and I can't think in the name. They've been talking for years about opening up for, you know, runners, joggers, bike paths. And I don't, you know, that's, I, I've been in the city thirty-seven years, and when I was here, they were talking about it. So, and I, I just wish something could be done to push that along, if you don't mind talking about it.
I, I am happy to kind of hit your answers too. So the pool, it does get regular maintenance. We've had some uptick in kind of things, just because it's from the fifties. It is probably needing to be completely taken out and redone, which is a big price tag. And that's a hard thing for people, for people to swallow, right? Because pools are not generally moneymakers. They are a community asset, and having access to water is an important thing during the hot summers. It's also a valuable skill for people in our community to learn to swim. And so
Price tag would be what?
You know, when we did the assessment in twenty seventeen, I think it was about three million.
It's pretty crazy.
Yeah. And so it's kind of, we need to, as a community, decide, is this valuable to us? And if it is, then we need to kind of just put our support behind that and go behind that. It is something I value as the director and think is an import, important thing to have, that people can walk in and get exercise. There is a lot of seniors in our community that that is their only form of exercise because of the low impact. They can't just go to the track and walk. That's not actually something they can do. And so having that pool is important. And as a, as a recreation professional, I think for me, I would also love to go down the path of therapeutic recreation. And having a smaller pool is big dreams, but you know, one can dream. So that is something we are working on. We do keep up on it as best we can. I would just say from a building perspective, the way they built pools in the fifties is probably not to code the way they built them now. And there's probably some better efficiencies that could happen with a complete dig out and redo. The partnerships that you were talking about in the northwest corner, that is one of the funding strategies that we, we've discussed with the consultants is those are opportunities for us to explore to see if the school district would be interested in those. Interestingly enough, the Johnny Morgan Park is actually a longstanding joint-use agreement with the school district. So the property line for the school district runs right through the middle of the park. So the property line for the school district runs right through the middle of the park.
Okay.
So we don't, we tend to keep the fields pretty open and accessible on that side, solely because the school uses them as their fields during the school day. And to have a walking path with adults coming through the school space is kind of counterproductive. So that's an interesting one for us to kind of manage. And I, I know that would be lovely. We've talked about beauty gardens, all kinds of things, but it butts up to neighbors and there's different things. The park ponds, yes, they are owned by the Water District. They're very particular about who and what goes on their property. So that one is, is a bit of a challenge. And the creek trail you're talking about is the Santa Moss Creek Trail. And that was a project that had got some traction a couple of years ago and then became kind of a, a challenge for people who lived in that area. It was not well-received. And so that, while it's, you know, that's probably our only way to add trails within Campbell would be along that creek trail there for us. And so it's something we could explore in the future. Again, it's still on the list. It's just, at the time, it was not the right timing with the community.
Thanks for all those answers.
No problem.
Wonderful. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you for the report. Wonderful. My one question is like, how do you think about like the abutting parks? Because like Hathaway Park is like just past the border of Campbell. So like when you're planning, are we going to attempt to build a house so that those people have a Campbell Park? If they live like right on the border of Campbell, San Jose? Or would we say, you know what, people don't care what city their park is in? There's a park that's great three blocks from here, like, we're good? Like, how do you all do that?
It is a challenge. So it is, for consultants, they use city-owned, and they kind of stick to that. And we have pushed back on that mainly because of these unique incidences that we have. You know, there is an industry standard of three acres per thousand residents, which we will never get to. And so when they did the math through that, they started with, here's what Campbell owns, and here's your, here's your number, right? And it's below average. And here it is when you add in things that are not owned by Campbell but are within Campbell limits. So you talk about the Las Gattas Creek Trail and the Park Ponds and those types of things. And then we really pushed, and we said, okay, now we want the number when you add in these two other parks, because they are truly used by Campbell residents. And interestingly enough, even at Santa Moss Park over there, there's a snippet of streets that are all Campbell, CA 9500A, but they actually are San Jose residents. And so they identify as Campbell, and they use that park still. And so it's really, we had them get that number for us because we, as, we know we're not getting more land. And so we really wanted to know, what is the real number when they're using all these other places? And so we did kind of draw in those last two, just so it'll be in the report.
And did that get close to the three acre?
No.
Okay, still, okay. But it was higher. Because I get, Rob had mentioned that in a previous meeting that we were like underparked. And I guess my reaction as a parent who's been to every park in this town, like five times now, just to kill any time possible. Like, we feel like we have a lot of parks.
Yeah.
And they're great, and I hope we invest more in the parks that we have. But my reaction to that was like a little bit of surprise that we're underparked, knowing how much is around us. But jury of one. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So my questions, some of them have been answered. For example, the partnerships with schools, that makes so much sense. There's no point in being underparked when there is a park that, there is a playground that school doesn't use, you know, after hours, for example. So like youth sports, you know, I'm a huge soccer fan. So always, you know, wondered, you know, if, you know, I know a lot of soccer players go out of Campbell to play the sport. You know, John, I think in, John D Morgan, I think, you know, there were some soccer fields, if I, if I remember correctly. But anyway, how about with county parks? You know, does county have any parks in our city limits that we can partner with that too?
So the dog park that is Campbell, that is actually county property. And so that was a partnership with the county for the city to develop the dog park and on their property. So that is an example of that. So that is the only county park that is within the Campbell city limits. Yeah.
Another question was regarding, we talked about the Park Dedication Fund. That comes from developer fees, if I don't, if I'm saying correctly. And is it like $10,000 or $15,000 per residential units? Or?
The requirement, the, the trigger to require Parkland dedication?
No, no, how much did developers pay for residential?
Yeah, it varies depending up at single-family, multifamily. Again, the parking luffy is range between, I think, $11,000 to $22,000. You know, that depending. You also get a credit for existing units that might be removed just by the project.
Got it. Because I know in Cupertino, I'm a civil engineer, so I do projects for clients. Cupertino, their park fee is like $110,000. It's, it's some ridiculous number, because land, I guess, that is much, much more expensive, you know. But, okay, so thank you for that. And those are basically my questions. So, so what is the number of acres per thousand residents? The way it stands right now, when you count those other opportunities to?
I'll have to, I will share that with you. I don't have it memorized what they did, because they just updated that report for us. But I'll, I'll, I'll find it out and share it with Rob.
Are we over two or, you know?
I'm not even going to speculate. I can't remember.
Okay, thank you very much on this.
Yeah, Cap, so I, 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 I started working a little bit with Natasha. I got to know Natasha about 15 years ago when I was on the CIC. And, and I was always very impressed with her work, and she got promoted. And my impression is that, first of all, the presentation was great. And that, you know, my, I, I don't have much to compare it to in terms of other cities, but it's like, with, with what we have to work with and the budget we have to work with, it seems like we do a really good job, not only with the community center, but at the parks in terms of keeping them clean and in good shape. So I, I'm just, you know, my, my general impression is we do a good job in Campbell with what we have. So I know we're short, we're short on open space, though. It's like, it's not enough.
I wish I could take credit that it's actually Todd Cristo, the Public Works Director.
I know, I know, Todd does a great job.
His team in our Parks Division does a fantastic job of making everything look absolutely beautiful. So I, I can, I can take care of the recreation side and the programming services, but yes, it is all.
So the only other comment I have is, 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 I'm not personally a community gardens kind of guy, but, but I know that it's a popular thing, and at least it used to be. I didn't even know about the community garden at Edith Morley. I didn't even know about Edith Morley until a few years ago, when I visited, I think, part of the commission. So, so, and then I found out there was a community garden, and then there was a, there's a waiting list. Is there still a, is no longer a waiting list?
Yeah, they've, they've changed their rules and how the processes of that, and they.
Turnover?
And they're, they work through them very quickly. So, yeah, so there are term limits.
But is there, is there thoughts about, you know, because it's, because of the location is so like out of, you know, it's funny, it's in, in this area where, you know, a lot of people don't even know about it. And, and most of Campbell is over on the west side of 17. And, you know, here, has there ever been thought about another community garden? That's either at the Community Center or at, at John Morgan Park? It seems to me that there's, there, you know, not, not knowing all the things that go on in terms of the use of the open fields and everything, it seems to me that there, there's potentially a place to put another community, or garden.
Yeah, I mean, community gardens are well-received. They are heavy resources for cities to manage and maintain. And they do need to be, you know, gated and locked so that people don't go in and damage, you know, plants or take food that was being planted and those kinds of things. So there are some beck and logistical things to adding one more online, to be honest, because, you know, if you don't keep your plot up, you get removed and you have to leave. And if you have stuff, you know, it's, it's, there's a lot of, it's like, it's like renting, you know, to people who may or may not take care of their space. And so that can be a challenge.
Has there been discussions about another community garden?
It has come up from community engagement, that community gardens are something that they would want. There's been a lot of, you know, things. And so it's, again, it's prioritizing what those are. Because, you know, you could do community gardens, you could do pickleball, you could do community festivals. Like, you know, it's just, you kind of have to pick which one, and that's where we're headed to next. It's like, here's all the things you guys have been talking about, or do you want to go with, with that on the programming side of things?
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
Thanks a lot.
No problem. Have a wonderful evening.
So actually, I forgot to call on Commissioner Corey. Thank you, Maggie, for reminding me. Corey, I apologize. Do you have any questions?
No worries. I actually had all my questions answered, so we're all good. Thank you.
Wonderful.
And thank you for the parks. They're lovely. I love them all.
Exactly. Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. Okay, so next is presentation on the state's land use and housing laws. Staff?
Thank you and good evening, Chair Camcar, members of the Planning Commission. So as you may be aware, state legislation is rather dense. So we provided a, a brief summary of five of the more significant bills which had been passed this last legislative cycle. They include SB 450, 1123, SB 1123, SB 1211, AB 893, and AB 2632, which we'll cover on the following slides. So SB 450 in particular is, it serves as an update to SB 9, which is the California Home Act. Of material consequence, SB 450 really changes design and subdivision standards and requires them to be uniformly applied within the underlying zone or to be more permissive than those which are already applied. This is to say, all single-family homes broadly are to be treated the same in terms of their development standards and development and/or design standards. It also imposes a new permit streamlining requirement of 60 days from the date of completeness. For the Planning Commission to know, just a couple of highlights. We did recently adopt an interim ordinance last night by the city council, which really sets forth a number of new provisions as a stopgap measure, understanding that this particular bill, SB 450, went into effect on January 1st. What it has done is it's also eliminated discretionary review for single-family homes. So you not, you will not be seeing any more single-family additions or brand new homes being brought either to the city site and architecture review committee or to the planning commission for review. And as previously mentioned, it did standardize development and design standards for all single-family homes, including those required, that, including those which are covered by area plans, like Santa Moss Area Neighborhood Plan, Campbell Village Neighborhood Plan. So we have really one set of standards in terms of setbacks, floor ratio, height, and design requirements. The next bill, SB 1123, is, it serves to update SB 684, which is the Starter Home Revitalization Act. Understanding these two bills are kind of difficult to follow. SB 9's really had historically been the, the bill which applied to single-family. SB 684 was really the, its counterpart that applied to multifamily.
And, and commercial, correct?
Not SB 684. That'd be, we have SB 6 and AB 2011, which apply to commercial. But I understand there's a lot of different bill numbers, and, and the branding of these particular bills doesn't really help a lot. I do like the Starter Home Revitalization Act. I added a little footnote there that this allows up to 10 units on a lot, really had historically applied to multifamily. But as part of the update to this bill to not complicate matters any further, it now also applies to single-family, but only when the lot is vacant. So the city has very few vacant single-family lots, but it would or could apply if we did. It also has a, reduced the required density for non-housing opportunity sites. Now it's 66% of the required of the allowable maximum, where it used to be 100%. So you don't have to build all the way to the tippy-top of what the density might have allowed. Further, it allows, it, it also provides that you may not count accessory dwelling units or J, junior accessory dwelling units in situations where jurisdiction may permit them. Just in terms of standards, because we've now created a, well, first and foremost, it allows the city to now impose a height limit to make it more clearly that we may deny a project if it doesn't meet our height standards imposed by the underlying zone. It also, because now we have single-family in play, it establishes a 1,200 square foot minimum lot size for single-family homes, and it eliminates minimum frontage requirements across the board. A few good points for the Planning Commission to know. SB 1123 has a delayed effective date. It's not one of those which is in effect already on January 1st. This one is, goes into effect July 1st of this year. Staff is working on having and implementing ordinance before you, before the effective date. So hopefully, we're, our, our stars align here. And that, this is by and large anticipated to have a limited impact to Campbell. Again, as previously stated, there is no vacant single-family homes. Our current SB 684 ordinance does not allow for ADUs. So putting a cap on that doesn't really affect our particular ordinance, just by and large. The next bill is about ADUs. It's SB 1211. By and large, it eliminates uncovered parking requirements. So some cities have still imposed a requirement to replace uncovered parking spaces when they were removed. Because the, the bill didn't, prior ADU legislation didn't specifically address that. It doesn't affect Campbell, because we didn't require the replacement of uncovered parking, but I figured it's worth mentioning. It also now has a very prescriptive list of development standards, as really specified by the government code. It's not allowing jurisdictions to impose their own design or development requirements for ADUs. You're really stuck to that list, which is in the government code directly. Also, there had been a little bit of confusion over this idea of what constitutes the livable space in an ADU that includes the garage when it's attached or other kind of little non-habitable spaces. The bill has clarified it only includes dwell, dwelling space for purposes of calculating how big the ADU is and how big the ADU is allowed to be. More significantly, it does also make changes to the maximum number of ADUs for sent for multifamily sites. Specifically, a lot within existing multifamily dwelling is now allowed to build up to eight detached ADUs on the property, but not to exceed the maximum number of units of the lot. So just to say, if you have an eight, if you have a multifamily site with eight units on it, you could have eight ADUs, but if you have five, you can only have five. A lot with, whereas a lot with a proposed multifamily dwelling, so imagine it's currently vacant, you're proposing, or you're proposing a demo, whatever there, you want to build a multifamily dwelling, the law requires a city to allow up to two detached ADUs. That kind of presents a little bit of an order operation challenge, because once you've built it, then you can come back and add, say, six more. But that's as the bill is written. Few points, just good to know for the, for the Planning Commission. Staff, again, is working on having ordinance to implement SB 1211. We're targeting a March or April date for adoption. So this is going to be a little bit ahead of some of the other changes which we'll be taking forward. Also, HCD has issued an ADU handbook, which is going to serve to inform implementation of our particular ADU ordinance update. So you have the, like, the letter of the law, and then you have, HCD has an interpretation of that. And we're going to be, by and large, deferring, it's going to help inform our implementation of ADU ordinance. Look at what HCD has written. It's also worth mentioning that HCD is also, has the ability to review our ADU ordinance for compliance once adopted. So you really have an implementing book, which is also guiding how to implement the law. And you have an agency, which is also going to be reviewing whether or not we've implemented it correctly thereafter. So giving a great amount of deference to ADU handbook is probably advisable. Okay, next up is AB 894. This pertains to shared parking. Really, by and large, requires local agency to allow for shared parking arrangements to meet any local parking requirement when there is underutilized parking located within 2,000 feet of a particular property. And that parking may be shared by entities located in either the same or contiguous parcels or in situations where there may be a shuttle that serves to provide access between those two shared, that shared parking sites. For purposes of this particular bill, I thought it was warranted to note the definition of what underutilized parking means. It's where 20% or more of the parking spaces are not occupied during the period of time that that parking is to be shared. So imagine you have like an AM or PMP period, 20% of those parking spaces are, are open. Two properties can enter into an agreement, and then the city is really kind of compelled to allow for a shared parking agreement between those two properties to satisfy any onsite parking requirement by our code.
Is that usually going to be, like you show the, in the picture, is that usually going to be something where there's already an existing commercial or office building, and there's a lot of parking? Is that the practical?
I, I would anticipate so. So imagine you have those, those shopping centers or sites with, like, or an office building with an ocean of available parking that's really not used, and you do a count, and you come out and they say, only 30% of these parking spaces are used, and you got another 70% surplus. Your building, say, a new building next door. You're building, say, a new building next door, and you, you're considering how many parking spaces you're going to need to serve that, to satisfy the obligation, and you can enter an agreement with that existing, say, underutilized office building, then you could possibly use those parking spaces and meet the requirement. Uh, again, just a few good points for the planning commission now. Staff, again, is working on having implementing ordinance. This is going to be part of a broader, comprehensive update to our agenda code, which is anticipated in spring of this year. And, uh, although this does allow for shared parking arrange-, arrangements, it's anticipated to have generally a more of a limited impact, again, in Campbell because of AB twenty ninety-seven. We have a number of light rail stations where limited to no parking requirements are are applied for most uses. And when you really look at our, our, our map here, a lot of the sites which would probably be most likely to, uh, like, commercial or multifamily that would be developed, even our housing opportunity sites are located within AB twenty ninety-seven zones. Because again, we could co-, we kind of concentrated development along light rail stops. So it's kind of an overlapping effect. We're not really anticipating shared parking relationships to be occurring in, say, Santa Moss, for example, or like, you know, yeah, single-family zones. Uh, the last bill, I think it's the last one I'm covering today, is, uh, there's a lot more bills which we're not covering. Is, uh, AB twenty-six thirty-two. It's thrift stores. So really, by and large, it requires that thrift stores be treated like retail stores, where they're selling similar goods. And the bill also does allow for agencies, however, to set reasonable standards for collection and receipt of goods. Uh, as previously mentioned, staff is working on having an implementing ordinance, kind of like an omnibus update. It's going to include a bunch of bills, including this one, which is again targeting that spring twenty twenty-five timeline. Uh, another thing I, another point I don't have on the screen here is, as part of our recent, uh, streamlining or permissibility of land uses update, we did go pretty far along these lines, because we've created this idea of, of thrift retail being treated the same as retail just general. What this bill is by and large doing is it's now allowing the donation aspects in conjunction with the retail sales, and requiring that to also be treated the same as a retail store. But again, it allows the city, the city does have some limited discretion to establish reasonable standards for the collection and receipt of goods. This is going to be an opportunity for the planning commission to possibly comment on, to say exactly specifically what are reasonable standards when considering the, the collection or donation of goods in association with a, a, a free, free activity.
So how is this going to impact either the thrift store or the community?
So, I, again, any existing, say, goodwill that we have in the city wouldn't be necessarily affected, because it's probably already subject to a land use entitlement or regulation that had, had allowed it to establish. By and large, this would apply to, like, new establishments. So say, if you wanted to have a goodwill, I'll give an extreme example, in the downtown, and we didn't otherwise want to allow goodwill to operate, say, on the main drag on East Campbell Avenue. If it's treated the same as retail and it's meeting whatever reasonable standards which are imposed pertaining to the collection and receipt of goods, it would need to be permitted the same. It would need to just be permitted use, to be signed off as a business license, and to be able to operate with any type of, I don't know, any kind of required tenant improvements by building permit. Uh, that, that, that by and large would be the material impact of this particular bill. Where, where historically, we had required a conditional use permit, it would have gone through a public noticing process. It would have been brought forward, uh, before the planning commission to opine on certain, like, how are they doing the donation, how it keeps operating, or whether or not we even want to allow this particular, particular use at a particular location, such as in the downtown.
Any questions or, or?
Yeah, that, that wraps up, uh, our quick blast of legislative updates. I, I will, again, as I previously mentioned, there's a bunch of legislation which we didn't cover tonight. We thought we, we picked some of the, the biggest and most impactful changes, which we thought would be relevant to the group.
Can you go back to the? Uh, one thing I want to note for the planning commission. So we've seen over the last five, ten years, uh, the state legislature assign a law, laws that generally preempt the discretionary ability of the city to provide standards in certain areas, mostly ADUs housing. The approach staff is, is starting to take with the ADU ordinance. What cities have typically done is take their ordinances and then update them to put in the state standards. There's an economy of scale where, let's say, seventy, eighty percent of your ordinance is the state standard. Uh, we're looking at this as perhaps flipping the script, a bit like the building code, if you know how the building code works. And to go to that, the, the state, the state adopts building code every three years, and if cities want to change it, they just do exceptions. So we might be moving to a model with this where we just defer explicitly to the state law, and then we refer to handouts, and then just identify a couple of areas where we have exceptions to state law. The staff would have to do is just be much more converse on taking that state legislation and interpreting it for our, our customers. But rather than try to adopt these state codes into our ordinances and constantly update them, it's probably a more sustainable approach. I think we're one of the first cities to do this, uh, but you'll probably see this as an ADU.
So regarding the ADUs, if I'm not mistaken, Campbell allows up to sixteen hundred square feet per ADU, or is it twelve hundred?
My recollection had been twelve hundred, but there had been also allowances, I thought, up to a particular ratio of the single-family home.
Fifty percent, huh?
I thought it was fifty percent of the.
Of the size. Okay, so, uh, uh, I also have another question. Is the, the one you mentioned about vacant property, you said vacant, it only applies to single-family homes that, they cannot, so if there is a, there is a old structure that's going to be demolished and new ones built, would, is that going to be treated as vacant, or?
That, that is an excellent question, and one which we are seeking to address as part of our new, uh, upcoming pending ordinance. I, I should probably clarify on this. It does, I mean, I, although it does also now apply to single-family lots when the lot is vacant, it also still, it still applies to multifamily, so multifamily lots are still covered by this particular bill. But yeah, it's going to be a good question. What does a lot mean to be vacant? What does it take to be vacant? How long does it, does it need to remain vacant? So our intention to broadly require, I'll just give it maybe a sneak preview here, here a little bit. The city currently allows demolition of units without a new entitlement in tow. There, there's no law that I'm aware of that requires the city to, um, allow demolition without an associated, say, planning or new housing project in play. This, uh, it's a strategy that we may employ to require, to require any demolition to come with a new project, so that you wouldn't have a situation where, say, a single-family home, let's say, Santa Moss, where deliberately, I don't want to say game system, but demo the lot, demo the building, to create a vacant lot, which then they could apply this bill. In order to demo a home, we would require the construction of a new home. As part of a, like, a part and parcel entitlement, so the lot wouldn't become vacant for purposes of bill.
And, and, uh, and, uh, realistically, I don't think you're going to have too many situations where somebody would demo a building just to make the lot vacant, because first, the value comes on dramatically, and second, the mortgager that has, who has money on that, they will never go for it, right? What are you doing to my guarantee? You know, so, um, unless it's, unless free and clear, you know, that's a different story. Um, okay, any other questions?
Want to clarify, so, we're talking, so, I should get very talking about, likely that some people demolish their house in order to do an escape. If, let's say, somebody owns theirs, their house is free and clear, and they demolished it, would that then be considered a vacant lot?
It could be, which is why staff is considering the safeguards discussed.
You, from those, I need one more.
Yeah, just that, if we, currently, the city does not require permit or new project to be in play, like, you don't need to propose a new house to demo an existing home. We would, we are considering policies which would require a new home to be proposed in order to facilitate the demolition of existing units, so that it wouldn't be vacant for a period of time, like, that would constitute a vacant lot. It'd be an active land use impediment, and possibly building permit required to be issued prior to or concurrently with demolition of an existing.
So if somebody got an impediment, and then that be, that would mean there's vacant on the lot?
These are details of the, of our particular ordinance, which hasn't been written yet, so I'm speaking a little bit speculatively, but I'd probably say, a solution to that could be that you may not com-, complete a demolition until there's issuance of a new.
But wouldn't that exclude somebody from building multiple lots? I mean, multiple, of these homes on what's in the family zone?
Well, the, the idea is, what we're trying to prevent is lot, like, say, a single-family lot becoming vacant in such a manner that somebody could then propose ten units on a otherwise vacant single-family lot. What, what then becomes a vacant single-family lot? So the idea here is that we try to provide some type of safeguard, the exact mechanics of which to be determined. I'll, I'll, maybe take it back, take, take a step back here.
So I'll jump in here. Probably one driver is housing is important. And I know there are provisions in state law where basically you shouldn't demolish housing without providing back. I'd say one provision the state would want was just, again, highly unlikely someone would do so, coming and demolish a bunch of homes. If it's associated with the development proposal, of course, that would go forward. But provisions we would look at just to prohibit folks from just coming in and taking lots, demolishing homes without any real plan to develop something.
But I think that's different from what we just heard.
Yeah, like, let's say I own a house on a lot, and I would like to, I would like to redevelop it so that I can have a bunch of townhomes on it, I would live in one, and still the rest can be free. Does the city want permitting?
I, I would say this is going to be, the implementation of eleven twenty-three will come before the planning commission, but I'd say, by and large, right now, single-family lo-, lots are governed by SB nine. So SB nine already allows for you to build, say, two duplexes on it, so four lots, four units, on a lot which currently only allows a single-family home. SB six eighty-four was intended to apply to existing, broad, broadly existing vacant single-family lots. Not for somebody to create a vacant, a vacancy of a lot, and then come back, and then build, exercise the bill in order to build ten units on the lot, where SB nine is already providing a path forward for single-family homes to add additional units on their lot. So it, it is, it is a sta-, it is a perspective that might, might be discussed, I suppose, as we advance. If, if we want to allow ten units in single-family traditional neighborhoods, just on a, on a.
But we've, we've already, but we do that. We, we, we've approved, uh, where they've gone and put it, put in, uh, um, multi-, multiple units on a large, single-family parcel, demolished a home. But we, we did it on Westwood, that, on Westwood, on, on, there's a couple of other places where we've approved a, a new development where there were multi-units going into a parcel that was a single-family lot. So I, I'm not quite sure.
Different zoning, because we got rid of the zoning.
If the size was big enough, you could talk about it. Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not clear here on what the.
So, so let me jump in, and again, the zoning would dictate it. I, I think it's all, laws, wholly new. Talked a lot of jurisdictions, they're still trying to figure out the law. Our staff is actually starting to develop ordinances. I, I think we've heard planning commission concern and feedback on things to think about with the law, especially single-family homes. I, I won't want us to get too far ahead of ourselves, because we don't even have an ordinance yet that's been drafted, that will yet come to the commission, to which I circle back and weigh in with.
I, I would, uh, point out that, uh, under the ordinance, if the property has had tenants on it within the last five years, it would not be considered vacant, even if, uh, structure had been demolished.
And I'd add on that, that there are separate bills which provide that you may not, say, demo a lo-, a lot that has existing low-income or protected units on it without replacing those units on site. So there are circumstances where it may be difficult to redevelop, if, say, if you're renting to a lower-income household, and you choose to demo that, that lot or unit.
And another complication is if the, if the developer moves the unit, not demolishes it, moves it to, let's say, another lot, then, then the lot still is, becomes vacant, but then it's not demolished. It's, you still have use of that structure, hopefully, somewhere in place. But anyway, we leave it to.
So this will come back before us and we'll discuss it. So, um, I would, oh, I'm going to say, we're going to get an ordinance before the date, so it's not going to be a situation where people, um, show up and say, state law tells me I can do this, and that. The city, which does not have.
Correct. So this is actually one of those, the, the rare ones, which actually has a delayed effective date of July. So this is the, actually, out of all the bills which were kind of presented before you, one of the ones which had the most breathing room on, so we're actually kind of still in the development stages of all of this, which we're discussing. So yeah, our intention to bring it back. It'll go before the planning commission and council prior to hopefully that, that July first, uh, uh, effective date.
Okay. One more question. About ministerial, a lot of this stuff is about ministerial, going to ministerial review, right? So, um, and I'm really, you got to box partly, because we're going to see a lot of stuff going away that we would have seen in the past, and, you know, obviously, there's a lot of the stuff I don't really care about. But, but ministerial review isn't, correct me if I'm wrong, is not specifically defined as staff review. That's, that's the norm, okay? Or where, that's what people think it, okay? Because you got a checklist, and it's like, okay, it meets the checklist, staff says meets the checklist, so it's, it's ministerial review. However, in theory, uncertain things, a planning commission could be doing a ministerial review. Am I correct?
They could. Um, I would mention that there are statutory, there, there are deadlines associated with the review of these projects. This does generally make it difficult to facilitate any type of, and, and there are also some bills which prohibit or preclude or limit the number of public hearings that may be associated with it, depending on exactly how that would be structured. It could be construed as a public hearing, especially if it's a full company, uh, company meant of the state planning commission, but it depends on the bill, depends on the provision. Sorry about ministerial review in general versus just this one before you.
So on that, my understanding was planning commissions are always public hearing. They always are announced, right? I don't think we can have a planning commission that are not public hearing.
Yeah, they, yes, they, they are. You do have to post an agenda, but that you do, do not necessarily have to have, uh, like, the, uh, published notice or the mail notice, just because it's becoming before the planning commission.
But, but the point is, if somebody wants to participate in that meeting, a, a member of the public, they can.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so, uh, my understanding of ministerial is, it will have no public inputs. It's just, so that's why I'm thinking staff.
So I'll, I'll say it this way, and our new attorney can jump in and clarify. Uh, planning commissions are set up generally for discretionary approval, and you take in input. We actually have a bunch of slides ahead, talk about this. Here from the public, you make decisions. Very organized and discretionary. Uh, ministerial ma-, basically means that, uh, you don't have discretion. You have to, commissioner Zister's point, you have a checklist. Typically, with building permits, if you meet in the checklist, you have zero discretion. Technically, I guess perhaps you could sit before and is, issue ministerial approvals. I, I would observe that would be extremely frustrating for both the public and yourselves, uh, given that's just nor-, normally how this hearing body is set up.
So what, um, are the changes that were made for the parts of the city that have the area plan to align with the rest of the city? I guess that was my understanding of what you said.
Yeah, so go-, going back here, so now we're speaking about, again, SB four fifty, which really is that bill which, for single-family, limited that discretionary review process. But again, standardized development and design standards across the board. So Campbell Village is the same as now Santa Moss, is the same as any other single-family zone property in the city in terms of required setbacks, required floor ratio, required heights, uh, et cetera. Uh, as a, as a good example, maybe, again, pointing out more, one of the more extreme examples, the Santa Moss Area Neighborhood Plan, where, say, a twenty-foot rear setback had been imposed for development of single-family homes, a four-foot setback is now required. That's a more of an extreme example. Say, Campbell Village, I think it was a lesser ten, ten pers-, uh, is a ten-foot rear setback, is now four. So it, it varies depending on which exact zoning designate, which area plan we're talking about, what the impact with the delta between the old standards and the new.
Same as the, as the general city.
Right.
Zoning.
I, I would broadly characterize it as the city had also recently adopted SB nine standards that had already allowed for, uh, specific objective development standards for specifically SB nine lots. So what the really, the bill did was it said, you can't really do that anymore. You can't have rules that apply only to SB nine lots, that have a different set of rules for those single-family homes in area plans or otherwise. So we took the SB nine rules, which we'd established, and kind of merged them, and kind of created a standardized set based on what we learned from SB nine, and what we took from the area plans, and we tried to create a harmony to the extent possible, and we're limited by law on, on imposition of standards. So it wasn't really subject to our discretion, whether or not the rear setback could be twenty or four. It had to be four, so we imposed four. Where we had discretion, we, we utilized them. And again.
Is that applicable for all single-family zonings for all development, or just like an SB nine?
All single-family for all development. All single family for all development, so long since we're talking about a single family project.
And a, or an SB nine project.
SB nine, and, yeah, for, for material consequence, the, we will not probably on a going forward basis call projects SB nine projects. We'll be calling them single, it's a single family housing project, because they've been flattened to that extent. Now, where there is minor differentiation is in the urban lot splits, those will be differentiated and they can still be differentiated, that's what. How you go about subdividing what was a formerly an SB nine project into two lots. We can still have some, we can still have a, uh, differing stan- differing, uh, permitting procedures and requirements pertaining to those.
Single family zoning change.
And I will say, because we just did have a really great extensive, uh, staff report written last night on the topic for the plant, for the city council. I'd say this topic is covered in greater detail by my colleague Daniel, who worked on the interim ordinance, I'd recommend. You can not only see the staff report explaining the changes and the basis and the reasoning behind it, but also you can see the interim ordinance, which will have on the books until such time. We take this more of a, a, a omnibus update forward and probably, again, that's spring updates period.
And also.
That's good, good guidance.
A major difference is when it's SB nine, you have to split the lots. It has its own costs and its own consequences, because SB nine is a lot split if I'm not mistaken.
No, just to, you don't have to split a lot, you could take an existing single family lot and put, you could put a duplex on it. And you don't have to split it to make that happen. Now you have the option of also splitting it, and then.
But we're still calling it single family.
Correct, so yeah, I mean, by and large, I mean, the best way of characterizing, there's no single, the, the SB nine broadly eliminated single family zoning. What we really have is two lots or more zoning statewide, it wasn't uniquely Campbell. Right, and as you, I can actually blow up this, this graphic here, but you're seeing here, lots can only be divided once and only one at a time, and then, I don't, I mean, it's not the best graphic, actually. But, I mean, bu- bu- by and large, SB nine allows for you to have, you can have two duplexes, you can have two single family homes in a lot.
But see with SB nine, when you do not split, you can sell one of them, because it's gonna have its own APN, its own title, its own deed, you know. Whereas if you just put two, uh, let's say duplexes on same lot, you can't sell one, you're gonna sell the whole thing off, right, yeah. So that's, that's, I think, the difference.
Yeah, it, it's definitely a distinction, you could not sell, you cannot convey the property separately without doing a urban lot split.
So two, two things to add, I just wanna hammer home the paradigm shift, the planners are already, and trying to say this to our legislative body and yourselves, that. For a while, par- SB nine was a paradigm shift, we called them SB nine projects, I know it's hard to sort of reconcile, we still think single family SB nine. But they're moving to an approach, rest, it's not really SB nine anymore, basically, you can do these duplexes and all these things in single family zones, and the standards have to be exactly the same, so it's. Have a forced merger, but to Stephen's point, you'll see that the terminology, I'm assuming, the way where you just have one set of standards for a duplex or for a single family home. Or for all these things, and, and basically the single family zoning just doesn't exist. It's hard to wrap your mind around, because it's a process, but, but that paradigm shift has sort of switched at this point, almost completely. Two, last night at the planning commission, um, was concerned just that our community members just weren't aware, again, this, uh, you know, it sort of takes that last dramatic step. Of single family, basically using all the SB nine standards, so they have asked us to do outreach, uh, there's two readings to the, uh, I'm sorry, not two readings. There's a, an ordinance extension that will come back in February. Uh, but we'll be doing outreach just to, to, through next door and to the neighborhood list, just to let them know that these laws have been adopted. Campbell's adopted an urgency ordinance, write some infographics, just basically on what that means, while folks ask questions.
And then a couple of meetings ago, we made a motion for the. You know.
ADU.
Yeah, the ADU, street side.
Ste- Ste- Setback, setback.
Setback, yeah, yeah, for the, um, street side. And then it wasn't in the minutes, did it get added to the minutes, and was it gonna be included in this? It was one of the updates.
I believe we did, I'll also circle back, Commissioner Straskey, I mean, I think we did update you, we were prepared to go with. The council and acknowledge that recommendation to the planning commission. We did get last minute comments from HCD asking us to change the ordinance yet again, and then we had new state laws, uh, coming effect on ADUs, so we've had to take a pause and, and reset. On our.
Yeah, not a well come together.
Was yesterday's session like an emergency session?
Uh, it was, uh, it was a normal, uh, city council is only having one meeting this month, uh, due to calendaring, that was yesterday.
Oh.
Uh, the ordinance that went to them was emergency.
Then one more specific question, one of the neighborhoods we talked about a couple of months ago had like specific sidewalk requirements, we didn't have to build sidewalks. You're calling what I'm talking about.
Yeah, Santa Moss is an example of it, but there's.
Is that still a thing, or is that now gone? Uh, the, maybe the broader question is like, is there anything left in the neighborhood plans?
The, so in terms of the effectiveness of the area plans, they're still in force and effect, and they still retain those streetscape requirements, so that also, so, which also occur in Santa Moss and also. In the Campbell Village neighborhood plan, that's why we didn't take in a, say, an associated action to rescind the effectiveness of those two plans. Uh, I do believe, but it's not something I can commit to, that the city's working on a, a broader streets, street standards, ma- kind of like master map plan. Which will hopefully can communicate exactly where and how all streetscape standards are to be developed in an objective way. That can be imposed, uh, where it can be imposed for, uh, new development proposals. There are new bills which I aren't covered here and now, which also do separately limit the city's ability to require dedications. For roadway improvements, where those roadway improvements or public right-of-way infrastructure upgrades are related to improving vehicle. Um, transportation, so if it's done for like car lanes as opposed to multimodal improvements, it being like bike and ped. So there are certain limitations and limiting factors, I couldn't go over all of them right now, again, there's a lot of legislation. But, yeah, by and large, we still maintain the area plans, there's still streetscape standards, there's still, there's still right-of-way requirements. The street is to be unimproved, the street is to be improved, curb gutter sidewalk, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot to try to digest, it's funny, we just hit a couple of the, uh, was, and we're just one time to finish, I can imagine all these conversations, but so many questions came up to me. And I'll go back to, this is what we're just talking about, so, we still have the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan, and the Campbell Village plan, and a couple of others, because why? Why do we still have those?
Yeah, good, great question, I, I'd say the documents are kind of divided into two parts, the first part has been broadly superseded, those being. Development standards and design standards that pert- pertain to single family homes. It's superseded by those new provisions which we just adopted, uh, related to SB four fifty on an urgency or interim basis. Which really standardized the rules across the board. The second half of those documents pertains to streetscape standards. So it says, on this particular street between, say, area and, you know, you, you name a range. This portion of the street is to remain unimproved, unimproved, we don't want it, we want to keep it, I want to say, uh, use a term, bar a term, rural, uh, in, in appearance, as opposed to having full curb gutter sidewalk. So th- those documents still provide that guidance, so when a development were to occur.
Okay.
Those rules are still imposed by those area plans, by extension.
So there's still a plan, it's just a lot more limited than the, than before, but there's still some things that it's pertinent for.
Really just the street standards, I mean, I think the Campbell Village plan might have a little bit more.
Pretty much just the streets, yeah, okay.
Right.
All right, that's a big change.
Can I ask a question about that, because, you know, the, 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 the no curb areas, I actually lived in, in Santa Moss in no curb street, but. But when there was a new development where they took and added a court and put in a whole bunch of new houses. There's a number of places where that's happened in Santa Moss, they've put in the full curbs and streetlights and the whole thing, okay? So, obviously, there's a time and a place when you can do that within an undeveloped ar- area of Santa Moss. Now, there's not much of an undeveloped area of Santa Moss anymore, but that happened over the last three or decades where they went and put in developments. And it had, you know, it looks like a regular curb street, so, I, how, how does that? How do those kind of things happen when you've got the San Dam- Damas plan where it says no cur- no curves?
Great question, I, I'd answer it as, um, the, the standards pertain to public streets. Whereas the streets, which sounds like you're describing are private streets within a private development.
Well, they, not necessarily.
And then I, I could go, I mean, I, I could also clarify, there are certain streets which are specifically prescribed by the plan as to allow for full curb gutter inside.
These were like new streets put in.
Yeah, exactly, so all of, yeah, most, the, the city doesn't, hasn't, to my knowledge, in recent memory, twenty plus years. Built any public streets, all the streets that you're seeing being built are actually private.
These were probably be, uh, previous to twenty years.
I couldn't speak without knowing the specific project, but I'd say, again, Santa Moss does allow for streets to be unimproved. No, you just, like, not really nothing other than a little bit of an asphalt curb, all the way up to full curb gutter sidewalk, depending on the exact segment, and it varies street to street, the plan's pretty detailed.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, can I, I'm still, I'm still, I'm still up here, just two other things real quick, and I just wanna, because it's pretty important, I wanna make sure, so I'll do, my question only is. Uh, I'm gonna tell you what I understood, and you can tell me if it's right or not, Stephen, but, so we were talking about the, the vacant lots and demolishing a, a house, and now make, making so. You can't demolish before there's a plan for a new building on it. And I think that, I think what I heard, what you said is that. We wanted to require that because there's a way now with the new laws, that somebody could, on a regular, single family lot, they could demolish the house. And wait a couple of months and then use some new rules that says, hey, this is a vacant lot, and now we can build a lot more units. So that's what we're trying to preclude, right?
I, I wouldn't, I, again, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves here too much, I, I'd say that this is all pending ordinance work, so we need to consider our options. Uh, in terms of how we may best implement it and how we may regulate it, but again, S, our, a- as we're kind of looking at it now, SB nine. Is the bill, the law of the land, which does allow for m- multiple units to be built already on single family lots.
Multiple, but, but, but limited, it's multiple.
It's less than ten.
Yeah, way less, it's way less than ten.
Yeah, so the, uh, uh, the S, the, the new bill, um, that being, uh, SB eleven twenty-three, you see it here on the screen, is, could allow up to ten units on a single family lot if it was vacant.
Well, that's.
Trying to prevent, again, uh, use the term I used before, people from gaming the system where, right now, SB nine would allow X, but if they demo the lot and just leave it vacant for a minute, then they could get ten.
Okay, that's exactly what, okay, that's what I was thinking. And I think it's important now, because, and I was so glad to hear that the city council talked about this public outreach. Because, uh, if you are getting, and there's this type situation where all of a sudden somebody could very easily. And, you know, developers will do that, if they can make the money, like anybody would, uh, all of a sudden, where you could have. You could split a lot, do a duplex, and do a couple eighty, usually you can get four or five, maybe even six units on a lot, now all of a sudden you can very easily get ten units. Now you've really upped the game and everybody has to know that, people have to know that.
Correct.
And, and they don't, I didn't until ten minutes, an hour ago.
A- a- and one other thing I'd add, and, and deliberately not to try to complicate matters, but there is a separate bill, SB ten. Which does allow the city to designate those single family properties where we would want to allow up to ten.
Yeah, that's fine.
So rather than having a develop, a developer go through a process of demoing a home, and then, and then calling it vacant and getting ten. We could go through a more of a deliberative and thought, thoughtful process of designating those single family lots. Which might make the most sense to say allow up to ten, maybe it's less than ten, maybe it's six or seven. Based on certain rules which we could set on certain major thorough, thoroughfares which we'd want to designate. So we could do it more of a, more of a thoughtful way, so SB ten is something else which is on the docket, it's, again, we have. Bunch of new legislation which we did before, so it's something that we're working on, but it will come at some point.
And just one final quick question, if I may, just on a whole different subject.
Yes, you may, ju- just, just one second.
Okay.
Um, SB ten, I understand, is you don't subdivide the lot, you can put ten apartments, but not ten. Ten blocks of division, you know, that, that was my understanding of SB, but, go ahead.
I'll just change this, one, one final subject, so we talked about the ADUs, of course, and I'm just curious if the city of Campbell, like the other cities, uh, there's a big, uh, there's a lot of, there are some companies emerging that are. Spectalizing in, uh, what's the word, custom-made modular sort of ADUs, that, have you, have they given input to Campbell, have you used their input? Does that have a, a factor in any of our ADUs that could maybe help, help push more ADUs out the door, kind of a thing?
Well, I mean, the standards are set by the state legislature, Commissioner Craig, uh, we are standing up, I'm pretty close to, to going live, it's called an express, uh, plan check program for ADUs, so, uh. ADUs have been around for a while, there's a lot of, again, contractors or even companies that specialize in ADUs. Uh, we get about two applications a week for ADUs. Uh, and this, and at this point, I've talked to our billing official, they're pretty standardized review, the really issue that comes up is just utilities a lot of times, but the. The structural and the exiting, the, the designs are really straightforward, and to answer your question, um, and this goes outside the forefront of the planning commission. Try and stand up an express program, if you came in and applied for an ADU permit on Monday, you actually might get it by Thursday.
Okay, great.
And we're pilot, we're kind of, pilot, we're, uh, carrying up with a few of the local ADU companies just to test that out.
Okay, thank you very much, yeah.
And one other thing I'd quickly add is that the city also, many cities, including Campbell, is looking at having an ADU plans calorie. This is the idea that you could have a, kind of like a pre-approved plan, which the building department may have already reviewed and signed off on. Some of which may even be free to use, so you could just download a plan online, submit it to the building department, and you're ready to go. You just need to make sure you're flopping in the right spot on the property, which again is the part of the process where the city has almost, again, limited to almost no discretion to dictate now. Because again, the standards are prescribed by the state.
Thank you, um, Commissioner Corey, um, do you have any questions?
No questions for me, thank you.
Daniel, I have a question, um, for the, uh, Stephen, sorry.
It's his name, guys.
They're, they're almost twins.
I don't know, do I have an excuse? Daniel usually do that. No, no, I don't lie, it's, it's because I'm reading the city council notes from last night, that, that's the connection. So what about the, um, objective or the standards related to the lot splitting, will it change anything with respect to that?
Did, did it change the provision, it's still, what's that?
Other standards.
The, the standards, not by recollection. Again, I think that what we do still maintain is differentiation between those parcel maps, which are traditional single family. And those which are urban lot splits in terms of a permitting process. I, I think it made it more clear that those are to be ministerially processed when they're urban lot splits. But beyond that, I don't think that there had been any development standard change, I think it was more process related.
Uh, other than they also had to be, uh, uniform and limited to lot design.
Right, so they're, they're those things, yeah, correct.
Added some, some thing to the code around the odd shaped lots.
Right. So, so it's actually, this is an example, when we talked about, you have the SB nine rules, you have the single family rules, and they're governed by area plans and all that, we kind of merged them and tried to harmonize them. This isn't actually an example of the SB nine rules now informing the single family books. So those which we, where we had, like, these exhibit, we had an exhibit saying, these are the, these are the allowable subdivision types. You have a flag lot as shaped, you can have a traditional and interior lot as shaped, a corner lot as shaped. But that now became our new objective development standard for how one may go about the subdivision of single family lots. Historically, we didn't really have rules about exactly straight lines or how you go about the logical and orderly, uh, subdivision of single family lots. As a result of these changes, we've now imposed those SB nine rules across the board on single family homes. As again, as part of flattening and standardizing across the board, process occurred. So we have, we have an exhibit as part of the, the implementing ordinance, which is now, all single family must be subdivided this way. Which we did not have necessarily before, allowing for, as long as you met, say, minimum lot width requirements, as long as you met minimum parcel sizes, you could have some very unusually shaped parcels. Which were unusual, to, to borrow a phrase from, I think, even the implementing ordinance. Uh, that no, would no longer be allowed, you have to meet one of those traditional subdivision configurations or it would not permit it.
And then what was the change in the minimum lot?
Again, I'd have to probably refer to the implementing ordinance as a table that pertains to all single-family. It's split. I, I can imagine it, but it shows the single-family R one standard lot requirements, and you have the urban lot split standards, which is, I think, a lesser standard, because it does allow for smaller lots, possibly.
And then my last question is, you know, with all the changes that the state's made, it's like been a big round of updates and refinements. Do you see, what, what, what is coming? What are, what are the discussions? What, what are kind of the big, like, trends that are?
I, I don't think anybody has a crystal ball and can broadly anticipate that. I'd like to say the state legislatures cover its bases now, because you have specific sections of the government code which pertain to the development and orderly or otherwise of single-family, which is that now being the SB nine, as now four fifty has amended, and you have rules which pertain to multifamily. So you're kind of covered in that basis. And as previously mentioned, even commercial lots are kind of now covered by SB six and AV twenty-eleven. So I, I would probably say refinements of the same would probably continue to be coming down the pike every year, which is why we're kind of taking this kind of, this newer strategic approach. Just given the legislative history, and we continue to see this being the case, where we're constantly trying to catch up, we're behind the eight ball. There's new ADU rules, and there's new ADU rules every single year. It's our intention to have kind of like a model or like an ordinance which kind of defers the state law as amended from time to time. And we may have implementing guides which help inform the day-to-day operations, as opposed to us trying to constantly codify state legislation, which is ever-changing into our local municipal code.
Thank you, Stephen.
Okay. Thank you for that. If there are no other questions, we're going to move on to the next.
Can we take a three-minute, or I can just go to the bathroom? Doesn't matter, if the rest of you don't care.
How, how long is the next section?
As long as you want to make.
So we should not have that break, right?
You have incentive to. Let's, let's take a, let's, let's take a five minute. Thank you. Okay, I think I had, I didn't put the meeting out of commission, so I guess we can just continue on. Item number four. This, no, yeah, this, item number four, presentation of planning commissioner training and onboard. Director?
Okay, evening commissioners. This is pretty much a refresher training. When I started with Campbell as PD on director in twenty twenty-one, I'm not sure if it was a formal training, but we started a more formal onboarding, I think, starting with Commissioner Fields. So explicitly for Commissioner Fields and Commissioner Majeski, this will be totally repetitive. But we thought, just run through kind of the general informational slides on how the planning commission works and resources and Brown Act and things to think about. So you might learn something new, might stimulate some discussion. But again, it's just kind of a general basic, kind of back to basics, if there's things you might learn from this. So I'll go through this. Any point, feel free to raise your hand, ask questions. And we'll see if it stimulates something new or some discussion. I'll skip that, sort of. So, of course, your seven-member decision, must make decisions on land use proposals. You know, just, just generally, you knew this when you came into office, the four corners, I know a lot of commissioners have questions on, talking about different things that the city works on. But generally, the four corners are the general plan, the zoning ordinance, things that regulate land use are required to come through and prescribed in state law. A lot of times, we do have related code updates. One example was when we brought the inclusion in housing ordinance, I think we brought the commercial linkage fee. Things related to land use will often bring due. Planning Commission is one of the few commissions in city charters that's recognized by state law, so as opposed to, say, the Parks Commission or some other commission. Generally consistent across all cities and counties, and that's the municipal code that governs it. Couple of things we'll talk about on Brown Act and conflict of interest. Again, you got that when you came on board, but there's some new questions or things to think about. So for the Brown Act, again, I think commissioners this year had one or two questions on this, but to go back, it's basically if you come together as an advisory body formal of the city and are making decisions or talking about issues, it's to have transparency, so the public has access to hear what you're saying, not done in private. Anytime there's a quorum, there's a notice of where you're at, and the public can observe and view and participate in the meeting. Important point is, especially in the age where there's social media and email communication, given your seven members have an appointed role, is that if you are communicating in any way that's more than four of you, that you have to be in a notice Brown Act setting. So some things I've seen with other commissions, when I was with the prior jurisdiction, comes up, sometimes there's emails that come out. And one of the, the issues I've seen in the past is something called this, either A, emailing broad commissioners, like, hey, what do you think about this? That would be a no-no, or even something I, I think is referred to as a serial email, issue of one email commission, one commissioner's emailing another issue. So just to be cognizant, if there's ever a situation where you're somehow put together or emailing together, that's something we'd want to have you out of. The last point on here is sort of talking to developers, that's sort of a Brown Act setting. So avoid initiation of contact with developers at a hearing. And I, I guess another principle related to this is that you all have generally equal access in making decisions. We'll talk a little bit more about that. I know a lot of you visit sites, but as you come into a meeting, especially if you're making a decision on a conditional use permit, you all have equal access to the staff report, you all have equal access to the information to make a decision. For some reason, you're talking to somebody like parties or a developer, they might have information no one else has. So one principle is you all have, you should disclose that, and generally, trying to avoid, you know, getting access to a lot of information other commissioners should not have. I'll pause there, see if there's any questions. Our city attorney wants to jump in on any of that.
Actually, if you can go over that very last thing you just said.
Yeah.
That access, so commissioners should not have access to information, access to too much information, is that? Did I hear you correctly?
I think the principle is you basically have equity of information in making a decision. So when you come in, you all understand the proposal, the site, seen it. If for some reason you're getting access to relevant information that no one else has, that would weigh in how you make a decision, that goes against the principle of sort of the Brown Act and the equity of information in making that decision.
Essentially, your decisions are supposed to be made in information that is within the public record. If you're making a decision on something else, something you've, you researched online that nobody else has, that wasn't put out on the record in some way, either orally or at, at a meeting or in writing in some way, then that is something that, that should not be occurring.
But if, but if you do, if you do research, and then you, and then you, you make that public within the meeting, that I, I looked at something and I saw this, and this is what I found out, that's acceptable, isn't that?
Correct. I guess one scenario, and I'll see if those are responsible, if you did some research, found something you think is super important to guide your decision-making, I mean, one option would be to present that to the rest of the commission and the public in the record, so there's, it's transparent.
I just. So the one thing that comes up, used to come up a lot, developer emails you and asks to meet with you. Do we want to have, do we have a standard policy on that?
I think the city has a standard policy, I mean, strongly in terms of transparency, if you could. I mean, nothing prohibits you from talking to a developer. I would, I would, we'll talk about it later, I'd always, if you talk to developer, my advice would be just to take in information and listen, and then disclose it. Everyone knows it. Any situation where you're providing feedback or advice or what you might think about a project is, is a big no-no. Talk about that later.
And then there's also recusal, right? Like if, for example, if you are within five hundred feet, or if you are, you know, like, let's say, I have a client that wants to do project in Campbell, then I have to recuse myself.
We orchestrated this, so you'd be on the next slide. So the next one is, of course, conflict of interest.
Just before we finish, just before, since we're on the slide. Oh, you, okay, go ahead. No, it's on the slide. I'll, I'll, I'll mention that.
So next issue would be conflict of interest, and this would, of course, be if you had some sort of financial interest in a project for the commission, that, that would be a conflict. Another inherent principle in state law is if you live in direct proximity to an application and you, you know, you'd be material affected, perhaps for property values or something, and the standard rule is done this five hundred feet. So what, what we've done today, and I apologize if we didn't distribute this before, I thought we had worked with our city clerk. I handed out to each of you. Apologize, Commissioner Majeski couldn't get to you. Just a quick handout of, we call them the no-fly zones. Basically, when you enrolled into planning commission office, where you, where you live, in a five hundred-foot radius around that, you can use that for guidance going forward, just to estimate if you think you see a project near there. Generally, two other things, when we do our public noticing, our, our planning commission clerk can, and the staff that helps out, tries to do a reference check, and we'll try and check to see if we see something, but I'd say it's also your responsibility just to see if there's something within five hundred feet. Stephen's mentioned, if you need to, there's Google map references that you can go on and measure that also. And again, if you have questions, you can ask us. Questions come up often if you own the property or it's rental, you can ask our city attorney, he can advise you on that. Anyways, that has to do with the proximity. In addition, again, if you have any financial interest in a project, that would be a conflict immediate family member. And I guess if there's, you know, questions four and five here, number, number four is, do you have a strong outside influence that may affect your decision? Number five is, can you make a strong impartial decision on the request? So I know there's instances, perhaps you've worked with a developer, you have a past history, you might be a friend. Especially four and five, you might want to ask yourself those questions, and again, consult with your city attorney if you think the answer to that would result in some sort of conflict.
And it's also, also appearance of conflict, right? I mean, the state also talks about, like, you know, when we look at the ethics things that we have to train, it's not just an actual conflict. It's also an appearance of conflict. Am I correct?
Absolutely.
And the remedy is recusal, right?
Yes.
You don't want.
Yeah, typically, you don't participate. I mean, you could go outside and observe, but there's no participation.
Any questions? Commissioner Majeski, any questions?
No questions.
No questions, okay. Thank you.
A second layer that this city has, not all cities have, is a code of conduct policy, and that goes more deeper into perceived conflicts. And this, this was up about two, one or two years ago, and it more has to do with any, any member of a board of commission that is also affiliated with outside organizations. So say you're a member of an advocacy organization, it could be environmental, it could be housing, it could be anything. So that code of, of conduct, in general principles say that if, for one, if the city has taken a position on something, say we're applying for state permits, housing element, something of that nature, that somebody on a board of commission who's been part of that shouldn't be acting outside of the city as part of an advocacy and trying to advocate on a different position for or against sort of what the city's trying to obtain from the state or federal government. So that'd be one scenario. Then it would be sort of representing yourself both as a planning commissioner and, say, perhaps a member of the Sierra Club or something like that, and representing yourself perhaps for another organization. So it's, it's intended to sort of divide those lines if you're sort of on a, or in an advocacy hat, keep it that very separate from you being on a board of commission. Once that was adopted, I, I believe, and I, the city clerk was going to circulate among all boards and commissions and have you sign the code of conduct. Not sure if all members have, but if you haven't, we can check in if that's been circulated to you. I'll stop there.
Questions?
Just a note, I think that I may have prompted this, in that I had, like, called into the state legislature to have a bill or another city or something like that, say, you know, hi, my name's Adam Bookbinder, I'm a planning commissioner for the city of Campbell, but I'm speaking here only for myself. That is not good enough. Don't, like, the advice I was given was, just say who you are. Don't say the rest, just, hi, I'm Adam Bookbinder, just some guy.
But use our own names.
You know, I think that's optional, you know.
Just use Adam's name.
I was dancing around it, but Adam is correct. It was the, it was the six, it was the case study where I, I think you were also a member of an advocacy organization, and it was a blending of, during the housing element of, of, of sort of talking to HCD and the state and where that city's housing.
To be clear, I sent in a whole bunch of letters to a variety of city, on behalf of a variety of cities, saying, hey, you didn't count your ADUs properly. Hey, this is ridiculous, et cetera, et cetera, and I believe I also tattled on us. I did that for a lot of cities. Like, you would not believe the shenanigans that some other cities attempt to do.
Okay.
Okay, so if you, if you have questions, again, if you're part of an advocacy organization, you want to be an advocate, and you want to make your voice heard for our city or state, I check in with our city attorney, read that code of conduct, like, if you might cross the line.
Um, any questions?
Yeah, sure.
How many?
No question. Thank you.
Oops. Uh, so back to sort of the four corners of, of what you do, uh, your, you know, the main, uh, hat you wear, we call it quasi judicial. Uh, and this is your typical role on your conditional use permits and your, um, permits of that nature where the city sent out sort of these policies, standards, findings for us to approve projects. And, and your job typically is to say, hey, does this project based on its merits, based on the facts, eat those findings. Uh, quasi judicial, so you're presenting information, evidence, facts. Um, you're trying to tie those facts to, to make a decision. Call it quasi judicial, it's sort of like a jury, you know, presented the facts of the case. And, and basically it's based that equity of information based on that disclosure and those facts. It's kind of quasi-legal. Uh, you are making a, a decision on a project. Again, a key, a key important thing here is not to prejudge. Uh, so I've seen this happen, not here, in other jurisdictions. Sometimes commissioners will get out way ahead and say, wow, that's a great project. We should approve that. And so don't do that. Uh, your, your role is to sort of, again, like the jury. Can imagine a juror saying at the beginning of the trial, he's, he or she is guilty or innocent. And all the situations where a CUP or something's coming for you, uh, you want to take all the information in, you don't want to sort of tell anyone your opinions on it. Wait until everything's before you in the hearing before making that decision or recommendation. Uh, so I'll stop and see if there's any questions on that. Great, great. Uh, just more to that, findings of fact is typically what you do, conclusionary findings, uh, you know, is, do you have the evidence to approve a project? And again, this is not new for the commission. You can often use these conditions of approval to get there, address something that you say is an issue. Projects wrong in the neighborhood in some way, you have sort of noise condition or traffic condition. That's all. Uh, site and architectural review permit, you've seen these, I'll skip this real fast, uh, conditional use permits. Uh, conditional use permits, you're used to, site and architectural review. Uh, as you have seen and, and you'll notice this trend, uh, most of our housing projects, uh, become much more streamlined and ministerial. Uh, I know you've write a lot of feedback on the single-family homes coming through you as of today. I think that, that spigot has been turned off. Uh, but again, you'll see much less housing projects to state laws. Site and architectural review committee, of course, you're familiar with, uh, you of course have provided direction. We're gonna start looking at revising how that's set up. But for the time being, that's, uh, the structure of the SARC committee. Uh, general structure of the meeting, uh, nothing new there for all you folks. See what else we got here. Agenda packets, uh, new there, let's keep going. Yeah, thank you. Haven't updated that. There's a ghost in my machine. I guess I'll end with this. So, uh, last thing, just, uh, if you didn't know already, I'm officially your secretary of the commission. If you have genuine agenda questions, you can use me as your free resource, as your first resource. And provides all administrative support to the commission, you send as a resource. I think you've been introduced at least three of our four planners, uh, it might be Steven, it might be Daniel.
Steven, that's right.
We've never seen him in the same place he was.
They are two different people.
I've seen, I've seen them together.
No salary savings.
They were having a beer. I saw you guys having a beer together.
And of course you've seen our two more junior planners, Tracy and Russell.
Wasn't that like Batman by day?
And that's it. If you, if you're curious, I think I've given you some updates on this community development. Uh, what you see is sort of a small slice of everything that happens. Um, we have a code enforcement division runs around and makes sure people are, uh, comply with the codes and if not, use these and their issues, building division. Uh, of course process all our building permits and of course we have a housing division, which is brand new. The housing manager and unhoused specialist that put in a lot of resources into standing up a lot more affordable housing and unhoused programs in the city. So that is about it. Uh, I'll stop there. If you learned one or two things new, if not, appreciate, uh, you sit through the refresher.
I, just one comment, having done, well, it was very helpful, but one thing I think you could add that I learned that after the fact is one. Like all of the options that we have, like that you can abstain. I remember months later being in a meeting and like Alan abstaining. I was like, oh, you can do that. Like, okay. Uh, and continuing, uh, items. Both of those were like, you know, procedural things that I wasn't aware of. So something on like, you know, telling people what their, their options are would, would have been helpful, but otherwise was very conclusive.
I know one of the things we do different here than, um, my previous stint, uh, in San Jose was that the, the so-called debate would begin after the motion was introduced and second was given. That's when the debate would start because then you have something to vote on. Whereas here, once we have a second, we immediately go to roll call, you know, and the debate has taken place beforehand, but, but it works, you know?
Yeah, I, I've seen, my former jurisdiction used to do it that way. You could go either way.
Does the city council in San Jose do it that way? Cause we kind of follow the city council here, right? I mean.
Uh, city council here typically is the same. They, they'll deliberate first and then the motion goes much quicker. I, I'd say that procedurally is a bit faster because if you, if you do a motion second to liberate, people sort of change their minds. It makes you unwind that motion if they want to go.
That, and also you may have, uh, opportunities for friendly or unfriendly amendments too, you know, so that is the other perspective. But we haven't had much controversial, you know, cases, um, you know.
See if more fast food restaurants with drive-throughs.
I, I see what Chick-fil-A is that they're going into sunny town.
Well, what I. Security was great.
Well, what I meant by controversial, not controversial project, but the, like, you know, defiring, um, uh, op- opinions, you know, not too many four-three votes, you know, or, you know, that's what I meant. Okay, so any, any questions? Here, none? Uh, thank you very much for that presentation. Um, and the final, um, item is report of committee development director.
Uh, not much to add beyond it. I'm, I'm trying to plug at the League of California Cities Planning Commissioners Academy. I know, uh, Davis, Cory have signed up, but if you're able to make it up to Santa Rosa, a great resource. Commissioners this year and we can help sign you up and there's a per diem and, uh, pay for your hotel. Uh, other than that, uh, probably in the next few months, uh, the city's moving to having commissioner, boards and commissions work plans adopted by the city council. So we'll probably bring to you an item, be to review your work plan, provide input in the next month or two for us. In addition.
Okay, with that, we will adjourn, uh, to the planning commission meeting of January twenty eighth at seven p.m. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.